Hello.
It look good?
Yeah, I've been playing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've not found about the craftsman.
Yeah, that's, it's like nineteen twenty.
Still looks nice.
It still looks good.
It does.
I was going with different maps, but.
No, it looks good though.
It does, it looks way better, doesn't it?
It's inviting.
Yeah, yeah.
I have your copy of George's letter.
Oh, okay.
Can I call to order the July fifteenth meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency? Begin our meeting tonight with a pledge of allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join, our guest, to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight will be led by the Director of Public Works, Bill Panos.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
The council did not meet in closed session this evening, so we're going to proceed directly to our general administration agenda, item one A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. I'm going to forego our regular set of instructions because we only have one member of the public here who knows all of the yellow cards and time limit rules. And so we do have one request to speak under this item. I won't ask if there are three guesses as to who it is, but Mr. Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, for the record. And I imagine I've said this a couple of times before, but it's not getting any cooler out there inside that shelter across the way to the east. It's got too many, too much wall to the north, and we need more circulation. And it'd be interesting if we'd have thermometers inside there and see how much warmer it gets. I think it gets fifteen to twenty degrees warmer inside that shelter, just like it does on three shelters over in Woodland on Cottonwood Street where they have it three-quarters enclosed. It's, I mean, it's good to protect from the cold and the rain, but why should, why should it heat us up more during the real hot days? It doesn't make sense, but.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. That is our only request to speak under item one A, so we're going to proceed to item one B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Kristoff.
One very quickly, JPA, Flood JPA met last Thursday, and the, the major item on our agenda was the senior consultants. And it's something that the Army Corps of Engineers is expressing a lot of interest in, so we, as a board, approve that, and I see it's on our agenda for tonight. And that's about it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kristoff. Other communications? The Board Directors of the Yola County Transportation District met on Monday evening, and the, weren't any major action items. Supervisor McGowan was appointed to serve on the Streetcar Policy Committee, replacing Councilman Harold Anderson from the city of Winters, who will, who will stay on as the alternate. But the board expressed its continued support of that project. And we heard a report that the, I think, the councils were, where the state's been taking away virtually all, virtually a hundred percent of the state transit assistant funds for the last several years, and is proposing to do that again in this year's budget. Last week, the state appellate court ruled that that was impermissible. And so, as it currently stands, if that ruling is sustained, in addition to making whole the district's budget from state funds, could potentially require the state to pay the district, I think, one million dollars, one to three million dollars in, in money that was owed. I'm sorry, it's a million dollars a year, so three million dollars in back payments, essentially.
So that's right of charge, huh?
Right, so.
I O U.
So that, I mean, that's, would have the, we don't, it's going to be appealed to the State Supreme Court, but that obviously could have some significant implications for, for us and for Yola, for local transit services, and even potentially for the, for streetcar operations. And then it's our turn, so I took over as chair on Monday night of the Transportation District as well, which means I've been there for fifteen years. It rotates every five years, and it's my third term, so it's, it never changes. So I think that was it from that, that board. Okay. If there's no other communications, then one C is appointments to boards and commissions. And I would like to appoint four members and an alternate for the Streetcar Policy Committee, so that committee can begin its work. We actually have up to, up to five appointments and up to two alternates, but at this stage, I'd like to appoint myself and Mr. Villegas as the primary council representatives, with Mr. Beers as the alternate, and then Mark Friedman from Fulcrum Property and James Moranti from PG&E as two of the business slash property owner developer representatives. We're entitled to appoint three in that category. The purpose of those, of those private sector appointments is to bring in, into the discussions and policymaking those that we, that we expect and who expect themselves to participate financially in the project. And so we'll be looking for additional partners, but those are, but Bridge District property owners and PG&E have already expressed interest in, either directly through their development agreements and, and the approvals that we've already given, or in PG&E cases, in PG&E's case more informally, an interest in participating in the project. So those would be the five appointments at this point. Myself, Mr. Villegas, Mr. Beers is the alternate, Mr. Friedman, and Mr. Moranti. Is there emotion?
You need a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
All right, so moved and seconded that those appointments be confirmed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. That brings us to the consent agenda, which is items two through five. Are there any items in consent that any member of the council wishes to remove, or any item for a separate question or comment?
Just a, just a question, if I could, on two.
Okay, item two is consideration of Resolution zero nine dash fifty-eight authorizing the collection of special tax to pay for certain services on the secured tax rolls in the same manner as the ordinary ad valorem property taxes. Mr. Villegas.
Yes, thank you, Evelyn. One of the questions that surfaced is the, the county assessor's office is going to be providing folks new assessed property values soon. I don't know how this relate, I mean, it may relate to this, it's the best opportunity I had to ask the question since you're here. And then I understand that once that is done, the county then provides that information to the cities to add whatever taxes are going to be assessed or added on to property, property tax rolls. How long does that take, how long does it take for the city to turn that around? Because I know folks are interested in learning what their new assessed market value is based on what the county is determining. And I understand that they have to come here for the, for the cities to add their portion to it. How long is it here before it's turned around back to the counties so that the public gets that information?
We have to have it submitted to the county by August tenth.
Oh, so it's, oh, so it's a very quick turnaround then? Because they're not going to provide it, I mean, they don't even have that information until next week or maybe a week after that.
We have just received the, the actual frozen rolls just this week, and we're trying to load them into the IT system right now.
So it has to be back to the counties by the tenth, then?
Correct. Normally, we get it much earlier in, in July, but I, as I had heard that they had, that the county had asked to delay it, that they're, they were shorthanded and needed more time to get it to all the cities.
Because of the volume, yeah. All right. Okay, fair enough. Great, thank you.
Item four is consideration of approval of contracts for the formation of Board of Senior Consultants to support the West Sacramento Leveing Improvement Program. Mayor Proton Beers.
Hi, Mike.
Hi.
I understand what we're, what the purpose is for, and, you know, if done right, I'm sure it adds value to the, to the process. The one thing I am concerned about, though, is, is the timeframes for the work that these folks do. I, I look through the contracts, and I look through the scope of work, and there's nothing in there that I found that binds them to provide their services within a certain amount of time. And I noticed they're working for SEFCa also, and I don't know who else they're working for, but I just didn't want, I didn't understand how, how will we engage with them to make sure that if we need a product from them, we get it on our timelines, not on theirs?
Yeah, that's a good question. We factored in their workload into our program schedule, so we have, we're starting to schedule out when they're visiting. We're already starting to send them information even in advance of, of approvals tonight, but we're starting to send out information to them so they can start their review process.
But, but there's nothing in here that, that says they have to deliver within, you know, if we give you something and we need a report. There's nothing that says we have to get it within ten days. There, you know, I mean, the only thing you could do is terminate the contract if we think they're taking too long.
Right, that, there's no criteria in the contract that specifies turnaround timelines, but they have been working with our consultant team. It hasn't been an issue, so it really wasn't something that was brought up. They've been delivering work products in a timely manner in the timeframes needed.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that I want to hold it up at the same time. It just seems like we should have something in the contract that, in, in our scope of work, or something that says you, you'll deliver defined timely and that they deliver it within those timeframes. I mean, everything's working fine now. It's, it's, it's when there's a problem and things don't work well, that's, that's my concern.
Yeah, right now, I mean, it's not in there. So we could, after the fact, send them what our program schedule is and get them to sign off on that, and if for some reason they, they couldn't, then we could terminate their contract.
Okay, I, I would just feel more comfortable that we have some capacity to enforce deadlines.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, that concludes then our consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded by Mayor Proton Beers and seconded by Mr. Joe Hannison. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unambiguously. Item six is consideration of budget and capital improvement program for fiscal years 2009, ten, and 2010, eleven.
Good, I got this on. I'm Eric Baldwin, members of the city council. We're pleased to present this budget to you tonight. I realize that this is the first time that both the operational budget and the CIP have been combined and presented simultaneously. And because of that, we're going to make this presentation in two parts. I'll go ahead and briefly present the operational side of the budget, and that will be followed shortly by a CIP presentation by the Director of Public Works, Mr. Panos. Now, we presented a budget workshop on May thirteenth, and followed by a suggested budget policy changes at your meeting on June the eighth. And I realize that you've probably had more exposure to this budget over the last year than you do, at least in recent memory, and you're probably very familiar with what went into this budget. And rather than recap what's gone on over a year, I thought I'd make a very brief presentation and what the final outcome was on a citywide basis, and I'll brush up a little bit on the supplementals that we, we put through there and open it up for your questions and comments. Let's see. Good. The, the issue here that we had, of course, was projected deficits, both in the general fund. Citywide, we didn't take a look at it very much at that time, but as you can see, this budget does show a balanced citywide budget. Now, I want to point out at this, at this time, that the hundred and nine million and the hundred and twelve million in revenues and associated appropriations of a hundred and nine, a hundred and eleven in both years strictly are operational. They do not include any CIP. They do not include CIP revenues. It's strictly the citywide budget for, for services. And in addition to that, if we take a look at the composition and the allocation of those resources, on the year 2009, ten, of the hundred and nine million, the pie chart shows the various types of allocations of those resources. If you take a look at that, you know that we've made a number of changes in trying to balance this budget. But I want to point out that these allocation percentages are very similar to what the city's experienced in the past. For example, you have public safety at twenty-eight percent in 2010. You have it at twenty-seven percent in 2011. In 2008, before we made these changes, structural and cost cutting, the percentages were twenty-eight percent in 2007, eight, and twenty-nine percent 2008, nine. So the allocation of these resources are almost identical to what we've historically recently produced in a budget. On the supplemental request, I briefly wanted to talk to this because this is a little bit different than what we've presented in the past. It includes costs that we're not certain at this time because, for example, the community center operations, that's expected to go on in year two. That a hundred and twenty-five thousand that you see there is strictly utility cost. There will be additional costs as we get closer to that, and we will probably bring those to you at the mid-year request. Of the items that you see on there that are of significance, you have the rec center lease payments, the traffic camera operational costs, and of course, the severance costs, which are the major items on the supplemental. I will tell you that the rec center lease payments represent half the lease payment. The other half will be actually funded by the park impact fee. The traffic camera operational cost has an associated revenue with it, which, as you can see, we've separated and put down on the bottom, for a net of one point three million in, in request for year one and eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand in year two. I think, I, I think basically, you know what's gone into this budget.
Mr. Thompson, I know you can't see, but.
You know the effort that's gone on. Excuse me?
I, I think it's, given that we've already seen most of the guts of this, rather than take it serially and then have all the questions at the end, if there are questions during the presentation, members of the council want to raise them, and Mr. Villegas has a question at the, right now.
I'm just trying, thanks, Doug. The traffic camera operational costs, the four hundred and ninety-two thousand, and then it goes to, for ten, eleven, it goes to close to a million. If I remember correctly, the last time we were going to have a policy discussion about that piece, and I, so, and I missed the last meeting, but I want to make sure that that's still the plan.
Before there's any implementation, the whole issue will come back, and there won't be any costs or not significant costs incurred until we have a program adopted by the city council.
Okay.
Yeah, because I remember Jefferson and the freeway or something like that, we had some issues that the council wanted to at least address and, and hear about.
So if, if that comes back and the council were to say, no, we don't want to do this program at all, will we be opening, will we then be opening up a hundred-plus-thousand-dollar hole in the budget?
You can see that there's, there's a gap, there's a slight positive based on this, these costs. These costs include a lot of upfront costs, so in, in normal operations, it would actually be more revenue than, than that. So yes, they would be opening up a relatively minor, but still significant, revenue.
Okay, I only ask because we don't, I just don't want to create a situation where we're passing on the conversation tonight, because we don't have a full report, and then come back in, in a month or two or whenever it would, might be scheduled, and then be essentially constrained to not be able to say no because we've built a, you know, the budget would fall apart if we.
No, it won't be of that magnitude. We'll have adequate reserves to deal with any, anything of this type.
All right, Mr. Thompson. Oh, sorry, Mr. Kristoff.
Under the domestic violence advocate, I don't remember that as being identified in a, on a line item within the budget, unless I probably, I might, must have missed it, but was it combined with something else?
Yes, it used to be funded by a grant, okay? And therefore, you didn't see it broken out separately.
Good.
But it's now, is it, it's now being shifted to the general fund?
Well, what happened was is we're not sure we're going to get that grant, and so what I had him do is simply put it out to the general fund, because the general fund will absorb it if we don't receive those grant funds.
The general fund.
And this is, this is only a portion of the cost of that. There are other portions that come from a countywide funding source. And so this is a ongoing operation that is in this budget as a cost.
So this is a, this is something we had in.
We've had this.
Joint with the county for?
No, it's, it's not joint with the county, but there's a, there's a funding source that is shared among the cities and the county that we have used to fund a portion of this.
Okay, okay. It went to the Wayfair House or something like that in Davis, I mean, in Woodland?
No, that, that's actually a different program.
Because we used to have, we used to have a domestic violence house here in West Sacramento, and then that, in essence, went away, and it went to, I think it went to Davis or Woodland.
That's not, not what this is.
This is not what this is. So what is this?
This is actually a position.
This, this is somebody that, that specializes this, that goes out with the police on these kinds of calls.
Right, this is a program.
To take care of situations. It's been in, I think we've had this for a long time.
Since I've been here, it's been here.
Yeah, okay, all right.
All right, Mr. Thompson, did you?
If there's no other questions on the operational side, Mr. Panos will present the CIP.
Raise this up a little. All right, thank you. The city council received a capital budget workshop on June tenth, 2009, and a follow-up information on July eighth, 2009. For this year, the capital improvement plan and the biennial capital budget was substantially revised and integrated with the city's operational budget process. Tonight, staff has provided for your consideration a proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2009 through 2014, it's the five-year CIP, and the biennial capital budget for fiscal years 2009 through 2011. We are respectfully requesting that the city council consider these documents and adopt the city's 2009, 2011 biennial capital budget, approve the city's 2009, 2014 capital improvement plan, find that the proposed projects are consistent with the general plan, and approve the assumptions and policies used in preparing the biennial capital budget. Now, as background, the city entered this budget cycle with more than two hundred authorized capital projects. After a thorough review and of all the available information, the available revenue, and priority infrastructure needs, staff has proposed only one hundred and sixteen authorized capital projects in the next two-year period. In the process of matching funding and priority infrastructure need, staff proposes to delay or close a hundred and twenty-nine capital projects. This action will result in deferring about twenty-seven million dollars in project authorizations. Many of the closed projects were simply completed. Over forty major capital projects were successfully completed. The value of these projects exceeds sixty million dollars. Much of the information contained within the CIP portion of the budget has been discussed and enhanced per council direction. There are three additional noteworthy components of the document that I'd like to bring to your attention tonight. The complexity of the information contained within our improved project data systems and CIP reports is very dynamic. It changes daily. We missed a project listing in your printed report. Project number five-two-six-two-oh is the Washington area monument. It is in the CIP, the biennial capital budget, and we had brought the project to council for approval June seventeenth, 2009. This important capital project is in our CIP system and is moving forward. The definition of a capital project changes slightly in this document. This is the second one. The definition of the capital project changes slightly in this document. In addition to clarifying the use of capital funds, we increased the dollar amount designation of a project considered capital from five thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars to make it more aligned with standard practices. Last, and finally, we have proposed the establishment and outlined the potential use of a capital reserve fund in the proposed budget policy. We also discussed the proposed council interaction with the fund and the revenue for the fund coming primarily from capital project delivery savings. Once established, we will move the available savings into the fund for further council action. And that's all I have. I'm pleased to take any questions that the council may have.
Mr. Joe Hannison?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, it's all very well put together. We've been at this for, for a number of different meetings. I just want to make sure that as the state goes through its, its mess and comes out with a plan, that surely thereafter, we have a discussion on, you know, what this looks like in that context. Because this is based on a number of, number of assumptions that may have been good assumptions last week, even today when it was printed, but tomorrow they may be different. So, I mean, I think it's, it's well put together, and, and it looks good. It's just that I don't know if it's, it's going to, what the situation's going to be two weeks from now, so. And is there a plan to, what would be the plan to update council then on, for example, the ramifications of the, of the state budget? Is, would the plan be to have maybe a workshop, or?
This is in regards to the whole, whole budget, correct?
Correct, correct.
So why don't we turn to the city manager?
Okay.
Mr. Ross.
Okay.
We have planned to, next Wednesday, in fact, to review the implications of what we expect to be a state decision. It may happen as early as this evening, or we hope certainly by early next week, and we'll start to develop strategies. We've discussed some of our preliminary notions about it, but it appears at this point that the, the impact will be substantial, maybe approaching five billion dollars statewide in terms of impact on cities and counties. For us, maybe as much as five to six million dollars. So it will be substantial, but we don't know at this point exactly how we'll be allocated, and we don't know over, what methods will be used to take the money. And so that makes a lot of difference in how we plan for it. So we, we would expect to have some strategies. Initially, we probably would communicate some information just in a newsletter and then anticipate when we have some recommendations on what to do coming back in a workshop. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, you're, we have a revenue shortfall policy, which doesn't specifically require that this come back to us, but, but certainly at five billion dollars, or five million, up to five million or in that neighborhood.
That's crisis phase.
That's crisis phase, and the revenue, if, if that were all general fund, that would put us in crisis phase, and, and that would certainly bring us engaged. But even if it's a smaller amount than that, I know that, you know, we, we want to see it as a, as opposed to getting just a report on what, what actions have been taken. Mr. Kristoff.
Yeah, Bill, you've done a great job with the budget. I mean, it's you and your staff, and I know the finance staff and Toby, this, it really is laying things out really well. There, and so I certainly want to support this item, but there is one part of the item that I do not support, and that is the Washington sign. I mean, I think that that is important that we do it, but I just don't, I think it's the timing of that we do it now because of the budget cuts and because of the positions that we've lost and all the other kinds of things that the city has gone through this year. I just don't think now's the time to put up a sign, and I think the people of the Washington neighborhood would agree with that. But at the same time, so I want to go ahead and support the document, but at the same time, I, I really don't know how just to pull one part of it out and say this is something that I do not support, and the reason that I don't support it. So I, I just don't know how to do that, but.
We could, we can certainly consider that because it's, it, we're, it's perfectly permissible for us to not spend money that we have, so we, we can separate that item out when we get to the, get to the vote.
That's fine.
On the cap, on the, on the capital budget.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Okay, Mayor Proton Beers?
And I'm not sure if this is, who this is to, but in our budget policies, we discussed, on page twelve, we have a bullet that redefines the amount of our general reserve fund from, it used to be ten to fifteen, and now it's ten to twenty, with a goal of going up. It seems to me, though, that we should have it fifteen to twenty if we're really trying to move it upward. The ten. The 10...
Well, we're looking at a budget policy that would apply in a broader term, and it's possible that we may, in the, really in the course of the next few months, determine that we're comfortable using a portion of our reserves and bringing it down to 10% and still be within our policy because the alternatives are more catastrophic than we care to entertain at this point. So that's why we kept the range. The goal is to achieve a 20%, but we wanted to keep the lower end of the range there in the case that we wanted to use reserves to meet some of our obligations.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Mr. Viegas?
So then Toby, so then the use of those reserves, is that for a one-time cost? Or is that in the hopes that the deficit is a one-time?
Well, again, the reserves are reserves, and they're general reserves. They're to deal with any either unanticipated cost or decline in revenues. That's what it's there for. We would not take an action on that outside of the direction of the City Council, so we'd be bringing back alternatives. And clearly, not only the general reserve, but also other reserves that we would have will be in the mix to try to address our problems.
On the state funding situation, so I understand in the last several hours or days, there's been an alternative proposal advanced that would extend the life of project areas throughout the state by something on the order of 10 years, allow local redevelopment agencies to choose to opt out of that, and then give the state some share of the additional tax increment from that additional 10 years and then securitize, and securitize that amount today as an, potentially as an alternative to one or more of the gas tax redevelopment or property tax shifts?
The, I, what I've heard is maybe less specific than what you have heard. I've heard that in, as an offset to this additional obligation, which would attach both the basic redevelopment fund and also the housing fund, they would give an extension to the district that would allow the RDA to then bond for and generate that revenue to pay to the state. The linkage to the others, you know apparently more about it than I do. I don't, I've not heard that.
Who thinks it's in addition?
And then what, what are the, have we given any preliminary thinking to the implications of that sort of extension?
Well, that extension, you know, we've just gone recently through an extension. We did that because it was financially attractive for us, clearly at the outside ends of redevelopment districts, that you make a tremendous amount of money. But there are, and it's interesting that the state might give us that authority unilaterally because there are counties and school districts and other special districts that are affected by that, and apparently they're not players in the decision, but...
Unless they change it, they have automatic pass-through.
They may have automatic pass-through, but it would, it helps, but it isn't the same as getting it back. It mitigates but doesn't replace.
Well, only asked because I've been asked, you know, for what our opinion would be. Would we prefer the grab today or the grab in 25 years?
If you were just talking money, well, there are two uncertainties. We don't know how effective redevelopment districts will be in issuing bonds for future revenue of that nature in an environment like this. But if we were talking about a traditional bonding environment, we would, that would be very, very lucrative for the city to have a decade-long extension of a redevelopment district.
All right. Or this other option, which is, or at least the one that I've heard, the state securitizing some future share that it might try to capture.
It seems like it would be better because of those are the out years, you know? I mean, it seems like it off the top. I mean, it's going to be a huge sum of money, but still, it seems like because of the financial constraints we're all in now, that it would be better to, any delays we can make would be advantageous.
Well, and that they would do, that they would do it, I mean, this idea that they would do it and then allow it and opt out as opposed to expecting that, or giving us that as a tool, might expedite. I think that's what they're contemplating, in part because unlike, unlike, well, I, we don't, we've not looked past our, the life of our agency, but there are other redevelopment areas that do not, do not envision having blight.
Right, at that time.
At the close of their periods, and so they cannot extend their, but they want to extend the areas so that they can capture some of that money. And so they would, they would benefit from doing this, but, and obviously so with the state in some respect. Okay, that's helpful. Maybe they've already reached a deal in the time that I've been asking you this, but... Okay. Other questions or comments on the budget?
Thank you.
Mr. Viegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a general comment. The shop local campaign, only because I know that it made the high end of the strategic plan that we went through at the beginning of the year and its significance to our local economy, I'm just wondering, I know it doesn't show up here necessarily because it's not a large budget item, but I'm just wondering to what extent we're going to invest in that, in part because I know that a lot of our businesses locally are struggling, and I think every day that we don't promote the impact of what it means to shop local, we're losing that opportunity. And I know I'm hearing from business owners regularly that they're struggling day to day to day. And so I'm just wondering how quickly we can partner up with the chamber who's agreed to take the lead on it to some extent, because I know we've set aside some of the business recruitment retention marketing money, just a little bit to help offset some of the costs of advertising the program, which I think is critically important. And I know every day that passes, we're missing that opportunity, so I just wonder if you could expand on that, because I know it's not specifically identified in the budget as a, as an item.
No, it's not a big cost item, but it's clearly a policy that we're incorporating into our activities, and it's already been reflected in some of the work that we do, things that we can control directly. We've gone back in the, for example, in the extension of the engineering contract last week, we went back and approached the general contractor and said, can we get some local preference on some of your subcontractors? And they've complied with that. And we have undertaken our own, in our purchasing requirements, a local preference component. But with respect to working with the chamber, we are engaged in that right now. We have supported some of the early phases of cost, and we would continue to do that very quickly.
Okay, because I know folks are looking for something more sort of visible, I would say, in the community, marketing and advertising and education component, because I don't think generally folks know that, you know, their shopping at local restaurants and stores is what pays for the parks and the police and the fire services, so.
Yeah, I understand that the consultant that's being retained is going to help develop such a program.
Yeah.
Anything further? I mean, this is very anticlimactic, but it reflects a lot of work that's been done over the last several months to get to this point. And although it remains a significant amount of uncertainty because of the actions at the state level, I know the council is, I mean, the fact that we're not having a wild name-calling debate like other budget-making legislative bodies do is reflective of that work and the tremendous contribution of a very talented team of folks, not just in finance and in public works, but throughout the organization, the department directors, managers, rank-and-file staff, who've come up with ideas and suggestions, who've been prepared to make sacrifices to protect one another and also to protect the core and the quality of services that we provide to our citizens. Just an outstanding effort that has been made throughout these months to achieve a budget that is balanced with conservative assumptions and that does take a responsible path towards making sure that we protect our citizens and that we deliver the basic and core services that they depend upon and that they expect from our community. So I just, I know on behalf of the council, I want to reemphasize that the fact that we're moving through this quickly is not, does not mean that we don't take it seriously. This is a major change going forward in what we're able to provide in our community. These are not easy cuts. Mr. Kristof's referenced some of the many personnel changes that have occurred, but also some, you know, belt-tightening in programs and services that we're able to provide in our city. But we've set priorities and look for every possible efficiency, look for ways to partner with others, and found creative ways of getting money from other places. You know, we've done everything possible to make sure that we're protecting those core services, and I know I'm personally proud of the organization and the people that compose it for getting that job done. And this is a budget that certainly is a model for what other governments, perhaps not the one in the Capitol dome, but what other governments, you know, should be doing to make sure that in tough fiscal times that you both take care of your, of our immediate needs, but also take a look to the long-term health and safety and opportunities that are still, still ahead of us. Mayor Proton Beers?
I just wanted to add one other thought to that, and I agree completely with the mayor and all the staff here, and our union, unions have, really, everybody's come to the table and recognized the issue. But I also think, and maybe this is going back too far, but the other piece of this is that our city's never overreached. We've never, you know, gone out and said, gee, look at the revenues, the line, it's going to go, it's just magic, it's going to keep going up over and over. So year after year, by priority setting, we've tried to live, you know, responsibly within our means, so we've never put ourselves out further. While these are drastic in some sense, I think other cities have just let the line, you know, that line's going to keep going up, and they've budgeted inappropriately. So I think there's a history of trying to keep, keep our budget in line with real estimates, and I think that that has done, done a good job for the city, too.
All right, so if there's no further discussion, then we have the both budgets for both years before us with a proposal to deal, to modify the capital improvement budget for, that's before us by removing the budget code item that Mr. Panos referenced, that I don't remember. I think it ended in a 6-5 or something.
52560?
52560?
52650.
52650. All right. So, Mr. Kristof, do you want to propose, do you want to make a motion approving this full set of budgets with that item excised?
Yeah, that's, that works for me. Let's see, what's the proper terminology? I would move that we respectfully recommend that the City Council adopt the operational and capital improvement budgets, including attachments for fiscal year 2009, 10, and 10-11, and ask for a separate vote on budget item 52650.
52620, do you know what page this is on?
It's not on a page. I looked.
Hey, I can't find it.
Is it?
I can't find it.
Because we already approved it.
Well, you guys...
It isn't on a page because it was...
That was my point.
That's why he was...
So what is the budget item?
52620.
52620?
Yes, it's called the Washington Area Monument.
I'm sorry, okay, I thought it was 50. Okay.
Okay, it's on here because it's not in the two-year budget?
No, in the process of printing out, it got inadvertently deleted.
Correct.
Oh, I thought you were only highlighting it because we spent so much time on it last time we took it.
Of all the projects that would not have showed up on our run, it was this one that didn't show up on it.
Well, I wanted to bring it up anyway, I just really didn't know how. Now I figured it, or somebody's figured it out.
The number is 52620.
So would that have been a redevelopment bond funding source?
Yes.
If it were to be listed on here, it would be on page 19 with redevelopment funds?
Yes.
Can you remind us what the dollar figure is?
Two...
$250,000.
$250,230.
250, 250?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the motion is to approve the proposed budgets minus, well, as written, so minus that, minus that project. Is there a second?
There's a go.
It's been moved and seconded. There's no further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Did everybody vote?
I don't mind having a separate vote on it, that's fine.
Oh, okay, I was calling for the vote on the, on the actual budget, but we can do it that way. We can just separate it out entirely. Okay.
That was his motion, is to separate it out.
Okay. All right, so all the, let me take the vote again. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, turned in? That motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the separated, divided item, which is the Washington project.
It's a Washington monument sign, and it's budget item 52620, and it's something that I don't support. I mean, I think that it is going, it would be important to keep it in the CPI, but in, like I said earlier, it's a timing issue for me. I think that today, we've asked our police officers and firemen and people that work for the city to not take pay raises, and we've eliminated positions, and we've done a lot of things that this budget, and we've all talked about, and quite frankly, we approve of those, we support those, but this is just one that I think is a little bit over the top, and it's something that I don't think we should be doing at this time. And so I would make a motion that we do not support that budget item.
Well, we don't need that.
We don't need that?
We'd need a motion to do it. If nothing passes at all, then it just won't happen. Mr. Jarenison?
I'd like to make a motion that we keep it. You know, I think, I understand Kesselmer Kristof's concern, $250,000 is a lot of money, but I think as a city, we need to show that we're moving forward. We're doing it on West Capitol Avenue, we're doing it across the street, hopefully with the Proposition 1C money coming into the triangle. We've got STIRS coming in, we've got a lot going on, and I think we have to be cognizant of entrances into our city. We've got a couple weak spots right now in our city. One is coming off 50 off Jefferson, and the other is coming off the High Street Bridge. And I feel that it's expensive, yes, but that money doesn't go to operations, it's a capital improvement project. And I think it's important to show that we are still moving forward and we're concerned about that neighborhood.
Mayor Proton Beers?
I'll second the motion, but I also want to emphasize that these are redevelopment funds and they're not used for any of the items that you mentioned, Bill. If there's a different capital improvement project that you thought was more important than that one, you know, I'd listen to that discussion, but I want to make sure that everyone here knows and anybody in the public that's watching, that these dollars are not...
That's not really true, though.
Oh, it's absolutely true.
Hey, look, when you budget things, you can budget things through the redevelopment agency, the agency can pay...
Where are we paying, where are we using redevelopment for police officers?
Anyway, okay.
So let's be honest about it.
We were having such a good six months of budgeting together.
That's great.
Mr. Viegas?
Said, so you've got a motion.
Mr. Pan, I have a question, because I'm sympathetic to Mr. Kristof's concerns. Where is this project in terms of its delivery? I mean, have we already issued, what have we already sent out in terms of bids and that sort of thing?
You know, I don't know all the details. The project manager's here, but I don't think he was prepared to make any presentation about this. I think it came to council, I could ask him to come up, he can come up. Come here. He didn't expect that you'd be speaking about this, did he? Why don't you give him a stand?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. The project went through a design-build process, selection process off the initial design work when the monument was designed to go into the center median. We moved it to the southeast corner of the intersection, which is agency-owned property, and we changed the monument by raising the foundation and retooling it so it could function as a bench and a gathering point. The project was awarded, we selected Clark Pacific for construction, the final design and construction of the project, and at this time, off of council's previous direction, we were finalizing the contract document in terms of making sure we had all the public contract language in there, and also securing the amended parking lease for the southeast corner property. So we had those two items, which were, everybody was on agreement on, we had to get the documents formatted and executed, and then we were going to finish design by the... formatted and executed, and then we were going to finish design by the end of September, we think, and construction would be in October.
Okay. And all of that is $250,000, or have we already spent some of the?
Yeah, there's been, I think about $80,000, off the top of my head, about $80,000 has already been spent on design for the previous design work. So this work is changing the fabrication method into a precast approach, which is Clark Pacific Specialty, and we're using a full design build approach so that they do the, the whole part of it rather than segregated construction task and a bid document.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I, I am definitely sympathetic to what Mr. Kristof has said. I felt the same way about the project in the, in the abstract, because we do have other, you know, very high-priority projects that we're deferring that are a lot more than $250,000, for the South River Road Bridge is an example of that, you know, further work on the Broadway Bridge, I mean, non-trivial projects in the city. And so, I mean, without getting into the debate about firefighters and all of that, just the, the other potential redevelopment expenditures and potentially the loss of significant amount of redevelopment money from the state, those, that all comes into play. So it is a, it's a, it's a big deal. On the other hand, you know, we're, we're already along the way on the project. We've, we've, you know, we've already started to invest our money, and I think we ought to, we ought to just get it done. I hope we don't have a gigantic, you know, groundbreaking with people, you know, jumping out of skydiving planes and all of that, because I do think, you know, what we're, what we are asking everybody in our community to do in terms, internally within the organization and citywide, you know, this is, this isn't, if we were starting from scratch, I wouldn't have voted to put this on the list, frankly, for this, for this cycle. But given, given where, where we are already in the process and the comments that Mr. Beers and particularly Mr. Johansson have made, I'm prepared to support the motion tonight. All right, if there's no further discussion, then Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Proton Beers?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Councilmember Kristof?
No.
Councilmember Viegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Johansson?
Yes.
Mayor Cabaldin?
Yes. All right, that motion carries. Order one, thank you. That concludes our consideration of the budget for the current five minutes, and we get the information from, from the state. That brings us to council calendar.
Mr. Mayor, this is our last meeting of the month, and, and August will be on our new regular schedule of the first and third Wednesdays of the month. There are a couple items that are happening before then. Caltrans is going to be having a, a public information meeting on the Harbor Interchange Project on July 27th from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. here in the, the Galleria. And we got word today that Congressman Thompson is planning to schedule a business roundtable on August 5th from 1:30 to 3:30. And I believe that's going to be here in the Galleria, but we haven't heard for certain on that. And then we've had a number of changes to the Toppenberg Paddock Retirement Party, and that is August 7th in the Galleria, and so you probably, you should have gotten an invitation for that. And I wanted to point out that the HDC has, has changed their meeting time, they're, they're going to be meeting on the third Thursday of the month at 4:00 p.m. at the HDC office now. August 4th is National Night Out. That's all.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions on the calendar? Sign done, city manager reports?
Nothing, this is me, Mr. Mayor.
City attorney reports? Staff direction for members of the council? And we have no future agenda item requests? Oh, Mr. Johansson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. You, you probably have all heard that the Bright Post Office is being reviewed for closure. This particular post office, I think it, it provides an essential service for a number of people in that community, a number of seniors and a number of folks that they can't get around, you know, promote sustainable communities and that, that, you know, a lot of business could be transacted there. And I, I'm wondering if council would be willing to maybe write a letter of support to the postal service saying, you know, please keep this thing open, it's a, it's a necessary facility for our, our community, we need it, and I think, you know, I, I understand that the postal service is, is having a lot of difficult times right now, and these decisions tend to be more revenue-based than, than maybe anything else. But I, I think, I think it would be a good thing for council to chime in on that, recognizing the importance of that facility to that neighborhood.
Yep.
I think you're right. I think a letter to Congressman Thompson as well.
I, I think that would be very appropriate. I mean, we did this 20 years ago? I don't, I can't remember now, but we did this a long, long time ago, and quite frankly, we were pretty successful. I don't know what weight the city had, but I, I think that this would be something that very appropriate to do, and certainly something I'd like to sign, if we can do that. Legally, can we do that, Reverend?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, and then, thank you, Mr. Johansson. We have no future agenda item requests. Is there motion to adjourn? Been moved by Mayor Proton Beers and seconded by Mr. Kristof. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, turned down? Motion carries unanimously, meeting is adjourned.